We'll call this work session Monday, February 7th to order. The invocation given by Ms. Tolliver and the pledge of allegiance by Mr. Dogg.
May we bow our heads? Dear Heavenly Father, thank you for this day. Thank you for the many blessings you have in store for our city. Father, please continue to keep your arms of protection around our first responders and every citizen that make up this great community. I ask this in your son's name. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Before we begin, number four, the tourism grant there, we're going to table that one. But to not let you down having a big agenda, we're going to add at the end, I guess, the number 15, an office remodel, the building department here at City Hall. All right, number one, discuss the Old Scottsboro wholesale property. I think the mayor wanted to start this.
The Boys and Girls Club of North Alabama has grown to 15 chartered sites between Madison, Limestone, Morgan, and Jackson Counties, serving nearly 4,000 children and teens annually. Last year, Redstone Federal Credit Union committed to help fund the Boys and Girls Club of North Alabama Doors to the Future Capital Campaign in the amount of $2 million. The Boys and Girls Club has side in Scottsboro as a beneficiary of part of this funding. We've got managers of Boys and Girls Club of North Alabama, Mr. Patrick Nguyen and Ms. Suzanne Rainey, and then Mr. James Allen are here tonight. Ms. Rainey?
So let me just start by saying that I pulled this sheet today from our brochure and I failed to delete Limestone County at the bottom. So that is Jackson County, so I just wanted to make sure that I brought that to your attention, too. This is not for Limestone County, this is for Scottsboro. So that is, at the top of the sheet is a rendering of the facility that we would like to construct, to use as a multipurpose facility for the Boys and Girls Club. We would construct a 2,500 square foot multipurpose facility across from the Ben Sanford Boys and Girls Club campus, if we're allowed to do that. This would enable us to provide large group activities for the kids and to host STEM competitions. We do these STEM competitions and the clubs that have the facilities that are large enough, you know, all of our clubs from four counties come together four times a year to compete, and it prepares them for larger competitions on college campuses. So that would help prepare our kids here in Scottsboro for those competitions as well as host some of those. And then in addition to that, we'd be able to do our daily activities, like large group activities, whether it's in STEM or performing arts or physical education. So we would like to be able to do that in a larger facility, indoors as well as outdoors. And so what we also like to do is add to that is an outdoor basketball court that we have pictured here. This is actually a court that was built at one of our Birmingham Boys and Girls Clubs, and it would be something similar to that. Actually, it's just like that. And so we would be able to do outdoor fitness as well. And then one of the things that we did not add on here but plan to do also is to add outdoor playground equipment to that. We have, as the mayor said, we have raised some money from Redstone. We have not really actively raised money in Scottsboro yet, but we do plan to do that here in the next few months as well. We do have, in addition to that, we have some money that's been committed from Taco Bell. It's Takala, actually, but they own the Taco Bell here, I believe. And so we're on our way. Hopefully, we will, we will have, we would hope if construction, I know it's been very slow, but, well, they're very busy, I should say, but it's hard to get somebody. Getting a time is slow, but we would hope to be able to break ground maybe by the fall.
It definitely looks like it'd be a beautiful facility. Anyone having questions on this? Mayor, if you'd just go over, what they're looking for from the city is basically the land?
Yes, correct. What they're looking at is the Old Scottsboro wholesale property that belongs to the city to use as the multipurpose facility.
Anyone else having questions on this?
If I could interject?
Yes, sir.
This particular tract of property that they are seeking was dominated to the city by the John Clinton Harris family. The city's only cost over the years with the property has been the demolition of the building. The city paid nothing for the property. If the mayor and council wish to contribute to property, the Boys and Girls Club are 501(c)(3) corporations with longstanding relationships between the city and the organization. It'd be a matter of declaring its surplus and directing the mayor to issue a deed to them if he wanted the contribution to proceed.
You want to have any questions on that? That's pretty clear. Thank you, Mr. Cameron. With that being said, we'll move that to next week's meeting.
Thank you.
Thank you. Number two, public hearing for the rezoning of the Allen property on Highway 79. This is the time and place for a public hearing. Is there anyone here for this? Thank you. Is anyone here against this? No, no one? Okay. You got it.
We'll share.
We can share. We can share. Thank you.
Yes, please. Thank you.
So right now, it's, these two properties are combined. There's two properties, they're five acres each, and the actual property line is deleted between the two. So this is, this right now is both properties put together, and it's kind of, it's a rendition of what we plan on doing. We would like to put in a covered boat and RV storage, and of course, it's not limited to boat and RV storage. People that have trailers, maybe some construction people can store stuff there. And we also plan on having open storage if somebody just has a trailer or a car that they want to store. And I picture that being further towards the back of the property. And anyways, so we, we're thinking about a, right now, 60-foot entrance from the property line back, so there's plenty of room to get off of the highway. The actual highway, the property line is probably about another 15 feet off of the pavement, so that's going to be close to 75 feet up to the gate. So nobody's hopefully having any issues getting in off the highway pulling a, any type of trailer or an RV. The 60-foot wide entrance is if somebody's coming out and somebody's coming in, we still don't have an issue. So we're going to make the entrance pretty wide. It's going to be concrete down to the gate, and then the property's going to be fenced in all the way around. May not fence all the property, we don't know yet, but I'm showing all the property fenced right now, so it just, it just depends. We don't know how many buildings we're going to have yet, and we plan on adding some in the future. So this is just an idea. Right now, I'm planning on some 30-foot-deep buildings and some 40-foot-deep, and there may be a couple of 50-foot-deep eventually, but they're, they're going to be more in the center of the property. And I'm trying to utilize the buildings to save on fencing, put the buildings right on the 15-foot green space, and then fence in between the buildings. And I'm, I'm looking at like 12 feet between the buildings. And they, and those are, I think, 96-foot buildings. They may end up being 144-foot buildings, which would take fewer buildings.
Anyone having questions on this property?
Mr. President, I do have one question.
Yes, sir.
Have you spoken with Aldot about direct access or acceleration or deceleration lanes?
Yes, I have been in contact with him, and once I acquire the property, he's going to meet with me and let me know if a turning lane is going to be needed.
Anyone else having questions? And of course, this has been a public hearing, there's a 15-day wait before there can be a vote, of course. So if there's no other questions, we'll move this to February 28th's meeting for a vote. Thank you.
All right, thank you.
This will conclude the public hearing. This is time and place for a public hearing. Anyone here for this? Okay, thank you. Anyone here against this? No? Okay. You want to present again?
A lot of happy hands, I didn't know I was going to be doing this again, but...
We've got.
All right, good. So basically, all I'm really wanting to do here is just purchase a piece of property, clean it up. I'm planning on putting a five-link chain link fence all the way around the property, three strand barbed wire, security, and basically build a 30-by-60 metal building. And this is just going to be for personal use. I'm not planning on doing any commercial business there, although I understand we probably need a commercial zoning in order to do that. Talked to Mr. Little's, and he seemed to think that if it's residential, I have to have a house on it. It's currently agricultural, so we can't do anything on it. I know there's a billboard on it currently, but, so I'm just looking for whatever zoning we can get in order for me to build a 30-by-60 metal building. I'm going to clean it up, have it all smoothed out, graded down. I've already met with a builder and a construction worker, or what do you ever you call them, dozer person. Got quotes and stuff and all that, so have a pretty good idea of what it's going to cost. But that's basically it, just going to be for personal use, and that's it.
This is just west of...
If you go to the Circle K, there's one little bitty small piece of property owned by Warehouse Row, it's coded as, and then it's that next piece of property between that and the railroad track. It's kind of an odd shape.
Like a triangle shape.
Yeah.
And he's looking to change it from AR to C3.
And with C3, will that allow us to do what I'm wanting to do?
If Mr. Little said it does, he'd be the one you'd have to ask.
All right.
Anyone else have any questions on that? Of course, the 28th would be the first time we can vote on that, 15 days, so February 28th meeting.
Okay.
Thank you. All right, we're going to table number four. So we're moving to number five, discuss tourism grant application for castin' and ketchin'. Mr. McNutt?
So good to see everybody, mayor and council. One thing that we've done over the past seven years is started the castin' and ketchin' fishing tournament, which is near and dear to us, and not only just us, but other families in Scottsboro, as well as North Alabama and the whole state of Alabama. Castin' and ketchin' is a nonprofit. We piggyback Children's Hospital of Alabama. 100% of the sponsorships, 100% of the money raised goes directly to the Pediatric and General Heart Center at Children's of Alabama. It treated our son Andrew, along with many others, not just here in Jackson County, but the whole state of Alabama. So it's the largest fishing tournament, charity fishing tournament in the nation, and it, we, to this, to this day, we've raised and donated $800,000 to the heart center. So this year, we're hoping that we can raise 200,000 to get to the million-dollar mark in seven years. So a lot of very generous people, some very generous people in this room, the city has helped us out tremendously, not only with the tourism grant in the past, but also with street cones or signage or just with goose pond and with a lot of different things. So roughly 500 fishermen, 250 boats is what we send out of Goose Pond, and it's, it's the highlight of our year. It's our mission and our passion, and so we thank you for considering the tourism grant of 5,000.
Anyone having questions on this? This has been a standing application we've received for the last few years, so no questions. We'll put this on next week's meeting. Thank you.
Thank you, guys.
Number six, discuss the request to rezone property at 1290 Porter Road. Mr. Clark?
I purchased the property adjacent to my existing building, the old Berry Construction Building. About, I've had this property about two years. It was the old Henry Estate, had the Catfish Farm on it. I cleaned all that up, took those buildings down, filled in those ponds, and this first sheet of paper you're looking at, the track A, is adjacent plan owner, adjacent land owner. And the bottom parcel, which, I hear on Porter Road, you see Porter Road right here, there's that house, and then my office building, and my little shop. Okay? This track that's on the bottom that says 9.8 acres is what I'm asking to be rezoned. It is currently an R1. So if you look at that second page, I sold six acres to Eddie Carter to rebuild Precision across the street, is the original idea that he had. And if you look at these contours, they're all one-foot contours, showing where the water was going at that present time. And you see this word that says fascinol, there's a fascinol building, and then there's a kidney dialysis building. That is a city street to access the commercial property right there, going in. And like Mr. McCamey asked earlier, does it, it already has an XL and a DCL lane there for this purpose? You look at the next page, so I'm sure everybody here knows that I'm doing the site work at Publix, and we had to get rid of all this dirt. So we hauled all this dirt in, and I sold some to Eddie and Chris and filled in some more on theirs, and then I improved my adjacent property, that 9.88 acres. Those contour lines, once again, are one foot apart, so that water's falling to the same place it was falling to start with. I haven't, I hadn't put any water on anybody. All right, you go to the third page, you see this 6.1 acres down here in the corner, it says E and C Properties. That's Eddie and Chris.
It's C4.
No, tracked, it's C4. That dialysis center is C4. Adjacent to Highway 72 is C4. You get up here on this next property line, all that, that 5.6, in that blue area is 5.66. Okay? I had Bob Freeman approach me about purchasing this, and he took it to the planning commission, and it got, it didn't get voted down, but they, we had a motion to get it put on the table, and it never got seconded. For what reason, I have no idea. But the pink property that's used, the parcel that you see, which shows 4.2, that's where my new shop's at. I'm sure you've all seen my new shop down there, that I've had for two years now. Okay? If I sell this property, that jet line that you see on the back, there's a gap in between the pink and the blue, that hatch line is currently where my fence is at. As oddly enough as it is, my office building, I was talking to Gregory Sharr today, and this still shows R1. I don't know how that got passed, and my shop's on R1, but I don't know how, I don't know, Josh let that get by, I guess, but I'm asking, I don't care if it's C1, C2, C3, C4, I just want it to be commercial. I don't think that's, I mean, I think Mr. Christopher 15 years ago came in this town and said, "Look, when we go to Goose Pond Island, this property I hear is worth more, it's twice as much, twice as much worth, twice as much money as waterfront property as it is industrial or commercial property." And I'm on a reverse situation of this. If this is, if this property is zoned back to C4, my property's worth a lot more than it is residential. I don't think you're ever going to see any houses back there, especially not coming in but off that highway or that turning lane. And then on the next page, it just shows that, in that blue area, so what I would be selling would be 16.3, is in that red, and that blue area is that complete 9.84. It's basically the same thing, it's just broken down on the page before of what Bob had agreed to purchase. All right, and then on the last page, there was some discussion of a lot of folks was concerned that I was filling a flood area or I was diverting water. That last map is currently the State of Alabama flood plan map. So when the city improved Porter Road, you're, five, six, eight years ago, they put two new culverts coming under that road, so there's more water coming down through there, that's But if you go out there and look, then, I didn't have a time to get my survey or do another topo, but I can present that. That water's breaking both ways. It's going toward La Sawn Drive, and then it's going back toward the fascinol. When it comes, it comes out underneath the fascinol, goes in there, it goes under 72 in two different places, coming off of E and C's property and coming off of my property. The water's going under Highway 72 over towards San O. So I'll answer any questions if y'all, if I can.
You don't know what you want it rezoned yet?
I'm asking for C4.
Okay, so you're asking for C4?
Which piece?
That, that whole 9.88 acres. Everything else is already C4.
Which one is Precision?
It's...
Right over where the ponds were.
Yes, sir. That's the, yes, on that one page, it's broke out as E and C Properties.
Okay.
I do a lot of work for Dollar Generals, and I could possibly work a deal out for that, so that'd be my ultimate goal.
So on yours, you're just wanting to rezone so you can sell it?
Uh, well, if he don't buy, he may back out now, I don't know.
Yeah.
I mean, I didn't realize this. So the previous owners were seven doctors, Herbert Holtz, I don't, there were seven of them, but I bought it from them. And I had a plat, I can't find it now, when I purchased the property, they had hired a civil engineer, so they had a geotechnical firm come out there and do drill. They drilled the sole to make sure it was compatible to be built on. Okay, they had, they paid to have that done. I have that report. And then they had a civil engineer actually draw up a medical clinic out there on that whole piece of property. So I let it slip by me. I didn't realize it was R1 and C4 when I purchased the property. So, and I already got a shop on part of it, so, and I want to add on to my shop. That's the reason I'm, that when Bob approached me, I told him I had to keep three or four more acres behind there. I'm going to add two more bays on to my shop, so...
Now, as, I was at the planning meeting.
Yes.
And so I think the biggest reason it didn't get a second because Bob didn't know what he wanted to do with it.
Right, 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 right.
And is he still at that point?
I'm not sure if Bob's even in the game anymore.
Okay.
I'm not, I mean, I'm not, I don't, he hired Greg Rashard to do a bunch of work, and then he dogged him off, so I'm not, I'm not even sure that Bob Freeman's in. There was some talk about some mini storages or something, and I actually called Bob today to get some information from Greg, and he said he bought the old Powersports building, and he said those, those are mini storages up there were nightmares, he wouldn't get into that, so I don't know. He said he was targeting $30 and $40 a month around.
Anyone having questions on this land? I think my only question would be is, right now, is what's it going to be rezoned for? You know?
Right now, for me, to build, finish building my shop on.
Okay, okay. For a shop, okay.
We're hauling gravel out there today, covering up the dirt lot.
Anyone else having questions? And as far as the rezoning goes, the first step would be to vote whether to move to a public hearing.
Yes, sir.
Okay. So what we'll do is put this on next week's agenda.
Okay.
To vote whether to go to a public hearing or not.
Thank y'all.
Thank you.
Y'all have a good evening.
All right, number seven, discuss the resolution surplus police department property. Chief Latimer?
I'll be brief. I'm looking to surplus two vehicles. First one's a 2000 Ford Crown Victoria that was purchased new in 2000. So it's a 22-year-old vehicle, was formerly Chief Smith's vehicle, and then it's been passed down. It has 166,000 miles on it, and it's a maintenance nightmare. It's well past its use, so I requested that be deemed surplus and so we can put it on sale on Gov. Deals. Second vehicle is the 2014 Ford F-150. This is the vehicle that was purchased for the animal control that we had so many issues with that y'all ended up allowing me to purchase a new 2021 Ford to replace this vehicle. So I'm requesting that that vehicle also be surplus and be sold on Gov. Deals.
Anyone having questions about the two vehicles?
At next week's meeting.
Thank you. Thank you. Number eight, discuss the resolution surplus street department property. Mr. Moore?
Thank you all. I thank you all have a copy of the surplus items that I have. This just pretty much all of it's wore out and is no use to us anymore. If you've got a question on any particular item, I'd be glad to answer it for you.
That van had been in there for a long time.
Yeah. Yeah, they're all pretty much wore out.
Yeah.
The little ton truck, the motor's bad in it, they're just all in bad shape.
Anyone have any questions on these seven items the street department has?
All these surplus that go on Gov. deals and is the money put back on their capital outlay?
No other questions? We'll move that next week's meeting. Thank you, Mr. Moore.
Appreciate it.
Number nine, discuss American Rescue Plan funds. First one, thank you for the many hours you've spent looking in over all this.
Thank you, Mr. President. I appreciate you allowing me to serve on the committee. I think it's great. We don't, we don't have too many opportunities where the federal government send us some money.
Yeah.
And we got some great opportunities here. Of course, obviously, we all realize what a serious situation we've had the last couple of years, but I do appreciate you asking me to participate and glad to do it. And of course, this is the American Rescue Plan Act funds that we're dealing with and it's targeted basically at four different areas to try to address, you know, the impacts of the COVID nineteen. Necessary improvements in water, sewer and broadband, to help local governments to recover lost revenue from sales tax, helping small businesses who have been negatively impacted from COVID nineteen. That would be, I'm sure y'all are well aware, restaurants and hotels and businesses, tourism businesses suffered a lot. So these are some really important areas that I know we'll be considering as we go further with the committee on, on the proper use of these funds. But tonight, I wanted to talk just a few minutes about premium pay for essential workers. As I'm sure y'all are aware, there's many large communities, Birmingham, Mobile, I think even Huntsville, maybe Florence, several large cities have already distributed some, some of their money, allocated some of their funds to essential workers. You're probably aware, County Commission has taken some steps to use some of their funding to help their employees. You know, y'all, some of them call this hazard pay, I guess. Y'all can remember back just a couple of years ago, about this time when this thing set in, everybody was quite frightened, I was, about getting sick and negative impacts associated with it. You recall, basically, for the month of March, many of our businesses shut down, industry shut down, everybody stayed at home. But thankfully, our public sector employees continued to come to work. They were essential. Now, these public employees are local government employees of all kinds, city hall employees, public utility employees, police, fire, emergency and medical services, water, wastewater, electric power board, natural gas, garbage collection, sanitation, all these guys continue to come to work in spite of the hazard. We all didn't know how bad it could really be. We all probably knew and know folks, family or friends that who didn't fare very well with COVID, but yet these guys came to work and kept, kept our community going, provided essential services. And so this hazard pay, if you will, is a way to help compensate them for the extra effort. I know having been in public utilities for almost thirty-two years, having folks come to work was real important. Not too many spare employees on anybody's payroll, so every one of them were essential to keeping things going. These guys couldn't shut down their operations and go to the house and work on the, online on computer, it's just not, not possible. Police work, the firework, water, natural gas, electric power, and y'all know the hazards our, our schools have wrestled with trying to balance, you know, children coming to school and teachers coming to school. But all of our premium, public sector employees, all of them, are eligible for premium pay. The final rule, you recall, we got an interim rule that was passed about six months ago. The government take, took six months to receive comments from around the country about different aspects of it, but the final rule clarifies that public sector employees are eligible employees for premium pay. It also stipulates that volunteer employees generally are not eligible for premium pay or, regrettably for you guys, elected officials are not eligible as well. But I would like to encourage the council to move forward with granting premium pay to our public sector employees and I would like to recommend that you do three thousand dollars for each employee. I'll pause and see if y'all have any questions or...
Well, that was the recommendation that comes from the committee, was three thousand dollars and that would include, of course, our biggest, I said, is our employees and the city of Scottsboro is blessed with some great employees. And we also wanted to include the utility department employees. And looking at that, it would be around three hundred and three employees, I think is what we come up with. And Mayor, I guess you can go over this money that we received, I believe it's two point seven million?
Well, actually, we've received fifty percent of our allocation, which was one point seven one four.
So we'd be looking at, with this, I guess you'd call hazard pay, it'd be a little over nine hundred thousand dollars to, for employees. Anyone have any questions about that?
I don't have a question, but I, I want to reiterate, we need to set a starting time and an ending time for when the employees were employed.
Okay.
And then it also, I think the committee said that the part-time employees would not be, it would not be available to them.
Mayor, I know we went over some of this already. With the three hundred and three employees that we came up with, what were the dates on those?
We did not establish a set date. And we need to look at that and see exactly what start, to Mr. Ashman's point, what start and finish dates we need to look at.
Okay.
Were we talking about when they declared the emergency and then when the emergency ended?
Which would cover twenty twenty through twenty twenty-one, or part of twenty twenty-one. So we can get those dates.
But I, I'm, I'm glad that they finally come around with the determination how we can spend the money and I, I think it's a good thing for our employees to get this, get this one-time raise.
Sir.
I do too, but also, I was hoping to be able to, be able to put this on next week's meeting and go ahead and vote, but with those questions...
Well, I think we still can. We just make it understood that, that we can go between those dates when the emergency started and when it ended.
Yeah, those, those dates are established, I just don't have them in front of me, but there was a date for the, when the emergency was declared and then when it was, was lifted.
Well, the stat, the, the act stipulates you can't exceed twenty-five thousand dollars per employee, so I don't think we're anywhere close.
Well, I think we, we were good with the committee who came up with the three thousand dollars. I think it was just the dates, like Mr. Ashman said, is making sure that we had everyone covered, because I'm sure there are a few people who have retired that would be included in those dates and things like that, so.
A question from Mr. Cannon.
Okay.
What about a definition for essential workers so we can make it clear this is...
I think Mr. Lot, excuse me, I think Mr. Lot has that, he pretty much, everybody is essential.
Yeah, there's a, essential work is performed while, not performed, while teleworking from a residence and either involves in-person interactions with patients, public or coworkers, or regular physical handling of items that were handled by, or handled by patients, public coworkers, so it's got a specific definition.
Rule addressed that.
Anyone else have any questions? Okay, well, then we are gonna move this to next week's meeting for a vote and, like I say, we'll clarify that before the vote.
Okay.
Thank you. Thank you for your work again. All right, number ten, discuss the compactor repair and this also be a dozer repair too. Mr. Leven?
Thank you, Mr. Bulley. We've already discussed the compactor in the solid waste disposal meeting, so if there's anything you want me to add or any questions, I'd be glad to do that.
Only thing I would add, I guess, would be the price, since we're in the open council meeting, to repair this dozer is about twenty-one thousand, three hundred and sixty-one dollars.
That's correct. That's rebuilding the transmission on the compactor.
Yeah, the compactor, I'm sorry.
Have you had a chance to look and see if there's any used units like this out there?
I sent some out, some emails and, you know, the prices were so close to, to new ones. These things had eight thousand hours on them and there wasn't a hundred thousand dollars difference, so we, we just kinda, kinda quit after we got some of those prices back.
Anyone else have any questions on the compactor? If not, we'll move on to the dozer. Okay, go ahead.
The dozer is a D sixty-five Komatsu. This, this dozer actually is in the garbage, you know, it's, it's run every day. This don't come out of the garbage, but the fuel pump, the fuel rail failed, sitting there now. This actual repair here is for a fuel pump and a fuel rail. It's, it's not even operational right this minute and it's sitting there at the edge of it. We, we brought them out to do some preliminary things, try to get us going with some filters and some things like that and it just didn't, it didn't do it. When they scanned it, it said a fuel rail would have to be replaced and the pump, that's where the twelve thousand dollars is coming from.
So there's a twelve thousand dollars on a dozer repair? Anyone have any questions on that?
I don't.
None, we'll move both of those to next week's meeting. Thank you, sir. Number eleven, discuss repairs for vehicle maintenance department. Mr. Congo?
I've got a heater and a door that's in need of repair at the shop. The heater is a, I got quotes for both replacing and repairing it. The replacing was twenty-seven hundred dollars, the repair was eighteen hundred and forty-seven, so that's what we're asking is the eighteen hundred and forty-seven to repair the heater. What I'm needing is a budget amendment. We've already had some, some things, we pretty much went through the majority of our budget, fixing other heaters, we've had several of them that was repaired, and some other miscellaneous stuff in the shop. So I'll need that repaired. And the door, if you guys remember, it's been almost two years ago, we replaced a eighteen by twenty-foot door and I think it was a little over sixteen thousand at that time. But this door is just like that one, it's another one, and I've had quotes for both replacing it and repairing it. I've talked with three different door companies, one of them, just after looking, they just declined and want the job. They didn't even want to quote it. I had another one that quoted repairing the door and it was going to be about eighteen thousand, but they did not, they was not interested in repairing. And then a third one come out and quoted about twenty-one thousand, replace it, but they said they could repair it for fifty-six hundred and twenty-five dollars. So rather than replace, I would like to repair this door. It's considerably cheaper, the guy assures me it's gonna be just as good as replacing it. The actual door itself's fine, it's, it's all in the drum and the top, so he's rebuilding the, the mechanism and we'll just keep our origin, our, our door. So, so I'm requesting an amendment, wait, we could do that also.
Anyone have any questions on the door or the heater? You answered my question, the door's in good shape, we just need to repair the barrel.
The door's in good shape. In fact, what the guy is going to do is, the door that we replaced a couple of years ago, the drum in it, he's rebuilding it, so we're, we're not ordering parts with my door gone, so we can keep our shop secure. He's building that drum, then he's gonna bring it back in and then do it all in one day, swap it out. And then, so that way, we'll, we won't have a big hole in the door, the door will be, the shop will be secured.
Okay.
And I do intend on keeping the other drum in case we have one of our other doors do this in the future, so we could maybe do the similar thing.
Okay. Anyone else have any questions on this? Not, we'll move both of these to the next week's meeting.
While I'm also here, you asked me to bring up the CDL.
Yes.
We have our CDL license that we're required for our mechanics to have. Mechanics have them within a year after hire, formal positions required to have it up front. The laws have changed as of today. They're gonna require that to get a CDL license, we're going to have to go to approximately a hundred and sixty hours of training in a training facility. Don't know the numbers of the cost of this, have, I have no idea what those costs gonna be, but it's gonna be expensive. If the city chose to cover these expenses, you're looking at paying someone for that hundred and sixty hours to go and, and the training, it's gonna get expensive. If we don't cover it, it's gonna be really hard to hire anybody with a CDL. I've been posted several positions since I've been here and we have yet to see an application come in that, someone that had a CDL. We've had to get it on the fly. I've got a position right now that is, where, is posted and it requires one in hand. I've had some applicants, but none of them have CDLs and I can't, I can't even interview them as long as it's that way. My question is, for my department, can we resolve, can we take that out of our job description, acquire mechanics to have CDLs? If we need to drive on the highway, we can get an operator to come and ride with us or drive and, which might be beneficial for diagnosing a vehicle anyways, but I would like to have that removed out of my job descriptions so we can maybe get some good mechanic applicants and, and, but anybody have any questions?
What would be the benefit of anybody having a CDL while they're there?
If we have CDL, we could go drive, test drive the vehicle on public roads by ourselves without an operator, that's the, that's the benefit.
Okay.
We can drive them off public, we don't, we're not required them as long as we're not on public roadway.
There'd be no need for everyone to have one in the shop, for sure.
I've got two guys in my shops got them, I have them, but I also have two guys in my shop currently that does not have them. One of them has just recently been moved into the shop, so he, his position prior to that did not require it, but it, it does now. I have a new hire that's been there less than six months that has not gotten his yet. I typically don't push them to get their CDLs until they get through their probationary period, because we have in the future, in the past, we have paid for their CDLs, so I wanted to be sure before we actually pay for CDLs. But that's the benefit. But that's the only benefit we have for having the CDLs and like I said...
I say with the CD furnishing the money to give, get somebody a CDL, they get CDL and then leave.
Exactly. And... And we don't know what the expense is going to be hereout. Anyone that has their permit, that has obtained their permit already as of today is good. But anybody that has not got a permit today on will have to go through the training. And I'm not sure exactly all the details of the training yet, because today was the deadline, so.
How many hours?
I'm told it's about a hundred and sixty hours. So, tell you, that could be expensive. And it's, I don't know, it's going to affect our other departments like sanitation and the street department. It's going to affect them probably more so than my department. But hopefully, the state has the ability to actually exempt that for our workers. I don't know that they have done that, or if they're in the works on that. But maybe that we can talk to some representatives and senators, maybe we can get somebody moving in a direction to do that. And that might help us and everybody else too. But anyway, that's not what I'm here for.
What I'd like to do is move this to the next work session. Give HR a chance to look at this and see, you know, the pros and cons of changing this, and also the mayor a little time. So we'll move this to the twenty-first, the next work session. Thank you, Mr. Congo. All right, number twelve, discuss the traffic signal installation bids for US Highway seventy-two and Scottsboro Commons. Mayor, Whitney, Ms. Phillips, were you going to go over this then?
Yes. We received two bids for the traffic signal installation. The bid review committee recommends the lowest bidder at Stone and Sons Electrical Contractors at two hundred and thirty thousand, eight hundred and two dollars and thirteen cents.
Anyone have any questions on that signal? We'll see your bids. If not, we'll move that to next week's meeting. All right, number thirteen, discuss the traffic signal installation bids for the shops of Scottsboro, the Public's Development. Ms. Phillips?
We also received two bids for this traffic signal installation. The bid review committee recommends Stone Electrical Company Incorporated at three hundred and eleven thousand, three hundred and sixty-six dollars and fifty-three cents.
Anyone having questions on that signal?
I do.
Yes, sir.
I know it's two different locations. But is there going to be a problem with two contractors working on, I mean, those lights aren't going to be synced with each other, so it doesn't matter that...
Two lights are in different places. One's going to be...
Thirty-five and one's on seventy.
Yes, yes. No, I think the best scenario for us is having two different companies, so you're not waiting on one of them to get done. So we could have them both working. But no, I don't see a problem with it, though. Anyone else?
I don't.
No other questions, we'll move that to next week's meeting also. All right, number fourteen, discuss the Goose Pond appointment. I'm going to open this up. I just wanted to get anyone's feelings on whether or not you felt like we should open this back up, or the four names we had. Of course, we voted on three. Do we feel like we could go ahead and fill this with the names we already have?
I think we need to move forward with the names that we already have. They went by the guidelines and turned their names in at the proper time. It's us that didn't make the choice.
Thank you, Mr. Ashburn. All right. Then we will move this to next week's meeting, and we will vote the same way, in the same order as we voted last time. All right, number fifteen, when we added the office remodel here at City Hall for the building department. Mr. Moses, you going to speak on that?
Currently have a map running between Josh and myself. And since we're hiring another inspector, we've run out of office space here, and we need to try to remodel it, add a door to it that actually opens into a hallway instead of their offices. And base some paintings, moving some cabinets involved, taking out a couple of doors, installing a door. And also the office that Chris, Dan, our current inspector that we've hired, that office has not been painted yet. So we included this painting of that office in with this same price. I got a couple of different prices, and the best price we got was eighty-one seventy-five. I've reached out to three different contractors, two did turn in a price. Kirby Construction at eighty-one seventy-five, and then Tucker Construction was eighty-three fifty. They were pretty tied in prices, but...
Anyone have any questions about the remodel? It's just, Mayor, as we call it, growing pains?
Absolutely.
And so we keep growing and it's costing. So somebody's getting a closet for an office, I see.
It's actually bigger than the office across the hall.
Thank you, Mr. Moses. We'll move that to next week's meeting. That'll conclude the meeting. Delegations, I've got a couple of names here. Mr. Roney.
Roney, I think I spoke to some of you in the past, and I just wanted to put a face-to-face. And I'll make this pretty brief. Well, first of all, I'd like to thank you for considering me as on a position for the Goose Pond Board. And I'll speed this up, I could talk and talk. But I'll start with, in nineteen fifty-seven, my mother gave birth to me. And I could continue, but like I said, I'll cut it short. But seriously, my family and my children and all have used Goose Pond for many, many years, all aspects of Goose Pond. Because right now, I have, my wife and I have a boat on the wet slip at Goose Pond. We've had it for probably seven years, so I spent a lot of time down there. I know kind of the ins and outs of what's going on with the marina. And, but there's a lot of other aspects, it's very good, and there's a lot of potential. I think that Goose Pond has probably been to me one of the number-one draws of Scottsboro bringing visitors in. Well, besides unclaimed baggage. And I think there's so much potential, and I'd like to be a part of that, is what I like. I'm retired, I've been retired for four years, so I have a lot of time to dedicate to this board. Besides, whatever they might do, I can do a lot of legwork, because I'm not one to sit around. So I will put a lot of time in for the future of this. That's my story.
Thank you. Anyone have anything you want to say? All right, thank you, Mr. Roney.
Thank you.
Ms. Green.
I'm Mary Margaret. I think I've met most of you. Like you said, I hadn't met you face-to-face yet, but just like Mr. Roney I am, I put my name in for the Goose Pond Board position, and I'm excited. I'm young, as you can tell, so you're thinking, she doesn't have a lot of mindset, she doesn't know a lot about that area yet. Well, I've been here all my life. I chose to come back here when I graduated from University of North Alabama in two thousand and nineteen. And I feel like I can bring some of those things that I saw living in Florence for four and a half years and new generations moving in here. You know, there's houses just across the street from my fiancee at the time that are going up. So, and they're from Huntsville, and they're moving to this area, and it's real close to Goose Pond. And we talked to them the other day, and they were, they knew about it, but they were like, well, is it going to grow? And I said, I'm hoping so, I have great ideas, you know, and I would love for, I know that the older generation uses it. I'm the golf coach, the girls' golf coach down there. So I spent a lot of time there, spent a lot of time on the lake, and I love it. And I'm just ready to see this city grow to its potential that I think it can grow. Like I said, I have good ideas. And now that, when I was made aware that this came open, my mind just started going, you know. Mr. Roney, I think is a great candidate as well. So if I was chosen for this, or if I was not, I'm still going to be eager to get involved in this community. I'm young, this was the first opportunity that I felt that I could jump into, so I'm excited. But other than that, I won't take any more of your time.
Anyone have comments or anything? Thank you, Ms. Green.
Thank you, Mary Margaret.
Removed reports, Mayor.
Just one, I want to recognize or mention that Scottsboro High School won the AHSA A Class Six A Boys State Indoor Track Meet this week championship. They won it with seventy-seven points. I guess this is the first Class Six A title for Coach Robinson and his Wildcats, but I guess the eighth boys' state crown overall. Additionally, Maddox Hame set a new, excuse me, all classification state indoor meet record by clearing sixteen feet, nine inches. Prior to that, Mr. Maddox cleared seventeen-six to set the high school crossplex record last week. And that vault is currently the tops in the nation for two thousand and twenty-two. So congratulations to our high school boys' track team. That's all I've got, thanks.
Maybe we can look at getting them in here.
Absolutely.
Yes. Okay. Mr. Dahl? Thank you. Ms. Oliver?
Only thing I have tonight is that we are, as the mayor was saying about the track, our basketball girls' team is hosting our area starting tomorrow night. And I would love for everybody to come out and to support our girls. Ever since I've been on the basketball team coaching, this is our second time hosting our area championship. So I would love for our city to come out and support our young ladies, because we need just as much of support as the males. Thank you.
Thank you.
And go Wildcats.
There you go. Mr. Ashburn.
I don't have anything. Thank y'all for coming out.
Thank you. Mr. Stewart?
Lord, but thank you all for coming tonight.
Thank you. I also want to say thank you for coming and sitting through this very long agenda tonight. I just want to say thank you, Mr. Ashburn, the mayor, and Mr. Light, for this putting together and looking at this American Rescue Plan funds. And we'd like to see getting this money in the employees' hands as soon as possible. So with that being said, we'll have a meeting next Monday night. You're adjourned.